Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the County Council meeting taking place on Wednesday, the 8th of December 2021. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the hall to switch off or make silent their mobile phones, please? Colleagues, today is the first council meeting since the passing of serving councillor Brian Avery. Brian represented the Ferryhill Electoral Division on the County Council from May 1st, 2008, and had been a former district councillor, having been on one of the councillors for Chilton Ward on Sedgefield Borough Council from 1991 to 2008. Brian has also served as Ferryhill Town Councillor and had previously been mayor of the town council. Brian's sudden passing came as a shock to us all. Brian was a devoted to everyone, his family, his friends, the wellbeing of others and the people he passionately represented. He did everything within his power for his community in that warmness, kindness and humility shone through the time of reflection following Brian's sad passing. Brian's character, his charm, his wit and his sheer dedication would be a huge miss to all of those who knew and worked with him. I know that group leaders or their representatives would like to say a few words about Brian at this point. So I will give you that opportunity now, one at a time. Councillor Shuttlesworth.
Morning, folks. I just wanted to say, Brian was a true servant of the people of Ferryhill. Every day before half past seven in the morning, every night before half past seven in the night, he phoned me for a general chat, but it was all to do with something, to do with something he wanted to do in Ferryhill. He was a true servant of those people and he'd be a real big miss, the simplest Brian.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Hopgood.
I had both the honour and the privilege of speaking at Brian's funeral and just being there represented what Brian was to Ferryhill and to his family and he will be a huge miss to everyone in this chamber.
Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Chairman. Brian here, 30 years of devotion and conscientious service of the people of Ferryhill and to local government in this county, and I think we all recognise that and will miss him.
Councillor Shield.
Thank you, Chair. I would like on behalf of the Durham group members to pay tribute to an extremely honourable and decent gentleman who represented his division of Ferryhill with great distinction. Brian would never profess to be a great academic, neither would he profess to be a great writer, but he was hugely respected as an independent councillor since 2008 by the majority of constituents of Ferryhill. Brian was passionate and dedicated to his community, being extremely approachable and willing to help his residents in any way that would benefit them. I believe that will be greatly missed by all members and all officers of this council. Rest in peace, Brian. God bless. It was a pleasure knowing you.
Councillor Crute.
Thank you, Chairman. Brian was one of those increasingly rare things in local government circles. He was a real character and much more than that. He was a character who was both liked and well-respected by officers and members across the piece. And I know from firsthand experience through many scrutiny through these over many years, that Brian held a real passion for Ferryhill and for the people of Ferryhill. And it's those people of Ferryhill and beyond who brought the true champion and for the community and the council are all the pillar of Brian's passion. The thoughts of the Labour Group are with Brian's family and close friends at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you all. Councillor Madison.
Thank you, Chair. I've known Brian for many years, both as a county councillor and his previous position as a councillor on Sedgefield Borough Council. And Brian was a very enthusiastic speaker. I have attended many meetings where Brian was present and he spoke very enthusiastically about his passion which was Ferryhill. And I'm just very, very sorry of Brian's passing. I'm sure everybody here will miss him and his contributions to the county council. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I also ask Councillor Charlton, the chairman of the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee, to say a few words? Councillor Charlton.
Thank you, Chair. As Chair of Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee, I'd like to acknowledge the tremendous help, support and guidance of my former vice-chair, colleague and friend, Brian Avery. I will miss our chats and his encouragement terribly. Rest in peace, Brian.
Thank you. If I may add a few words, I was also at the funeral, as a lot of members were. But what stuck out in my mind when the vicar said, "Brian knew everybody just about in Ferryhill, but everybody in Ferryhill knew Brian", and that's what he said and it's stuck in my mind for a long time. Thank you, members. Can I now ask you all to be upstanding for a moment for Brian? Thank you, members. Before we move on to the business on the agenda, I would just like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. You will note that measures once again are in place for social distancing and one-way system is in operation. If you need to leave the main hall at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave and re-enter the room. You must wear a face mask if you need to move around the hall. However, if you ask, I would ask you to limit your movements around the hall as much as possible during the meeting. You can remove your masks when you are seated. The external doors will be opened periodically to provide ventilation. Any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your hand in the air and a member of committee services will assist. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and wait until one of the microphone operators is in the proximity. The microphones are being wiped down after each use. Please be patient as the staff do their best to coordinate these arrangements. I would also like to welcome to the meeting members of the public. You are very welcome to attend and observe the proceedings. However, I request politely that you do not disprove the meeting. Can we move to item one, the minutes of the meeting held on the 20th of October 2021? Can I have a mover, please?
Can I just move the minute?
Can I have a second, please?
Second minute, Chair, Councillor Bell.
Members, are the minutes agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can we move to item two, declarations of interest? Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on today's agenda? Thank you. We'll move to item three, chairs' announcements. Colleagues, you will recall at the last meeting I referred attendance at events in my capacity as chair and I continued to enjoy attending events over the last month, including our own Christmas carol service held at County Hall last week. It also gives me great pleasure to announce that Durham County Council Children's Services were winners of the Supporting Social Solutions Service Award at the Local Government Chronicle Awards, which celebrate excellence in local government. Can I invite the Corporate Director of Children and Young People's Services to come and collect the award and say a few words about the award?
Thank you, Chair. Absolutely delighted to receive this award.
Okay, is that working?
Yep.
Okay, I'll start again.
So first of all, thank you, Chair. Absolutely delighted to receive this award on behalf of Children's Services. It's a really prestigious award nationally. We know that the judges looked at around 200 submissions in the children's services category. So I think for our team to win this award is really fantastic. The Support Solutions Service, to say a little miss about them, they're a team who work with young people and families who are at the point of crisis. They work often out of hours, evenings, weekends. They're always there for our young people and families. They build relationships, long-term relationships often with the young people that they work with. And the passion and commitment of their staff really shone through. And I think that was really evident in the submission to the judges. We're really proud of the work that they do on a daily basis and the impact that they have. So since the service was started in 2018, about 90% of the young people they work with, they've supported to stay at home or to stay with extended families. And the relationships they've built have helped make a real impact and build long-term change in families. And I don't think you can underestimate the impact that they have on the lives of some of our most vulnerable young people. So absolutely delighted, like to pass on my thanks to the team for the work that they do. And I know that we hugely value, hugely value it and their commitment. And should never be underestimated, the work they do is amazing. So thank you, Chair.
Well done. Thank you for that and well done. Can I move to item number four? Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Thanks, Chair. As everyone is aware, the last weekend of November saw gale-force winds, torrential rain and heavy snowfall as Storm Arwen swept the region. Since then, we have been working extremely closely with our partners in County Durham and Darlington, Local Resilience Forum, to provide help and support to residents, including supporting National Power Grid and helping people affected by power outages. Work is still ongoing and I know council staff and all of our partners have been working extremely hard to help communities in the aftermath of the storm. My thanks go to everyone who has gone above and beyond to support our local communities in County Durham. It's been a huge effort. My thanks also to local communities themselves who have rallied around to support each other and also to the military for their support and assistance during what has been an extremely challenging time. Chairman, with your permission, I would like John Hewitt, our Chief Executive, and Chair of the LRF Strategic Coordinate Group to give us the latest update. And can I also welcome Stuart Emmington, Chief Fire Officer, Chair of the Local Resilience Forum, who I would also like to give an update. Chairman, we do not intend to enter a debate on this item as I know officers and members have been dealing with many, many grievances and are still responding to the incident. However, we will look at how review is undertaken when we understand the national position on any review going forwards.
Okay, members. In the circumstances, it would be appropriate to allow you to hear from Mr. Hewitt and Mr. Everington. I would, however, ask that you save any questions or discussions that you may have for them outside of this meeting, please. Could I ask John and Stuart to report to the podium?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members, and hope everyone's okay. As members know, Storm Arwen hit large parts of the North East of Cumbria on the night of Friday, the 26th of November, one of the worst storms to hit our area in decades. From the councils and our local resilience partner perspectives, the immediate aftermath of the storm saw our teams dealing with fallen trees, blocked roads, damaged buildings and highways, and helping local communities with storm damage. I want to go on record and thank every single member of staff in this council and our partner agencies who have been working tirelessly to clean up and keep communities safe since the storm hit. It has been an absolutely fantastic effort, especially after almost two years of dealing with the coronavirus emergency. Members are also aware of the significant impact caused by power outages to the electricity network in this county and neighbouring Northumberland, as well as other areas across the country. In this area, County Durham, the responsible organisation for resolving the power outage is Northern Power Grid, who have been working since the storm to restore power to homes in our county. It is important to note that meetings of our LRF partners took place over the weekend of the 27th of November, which the Chief Fire Officer will cover in his update. However, through the Strategic Coordination Group, which I chaired on this occasion, the council, in agreement with partners from the LRF, declared a major incident on the 1st of December, when information from Northern Power Grid suggested power outages would not be restored until the weekend. At the same time, I initiated a request for military assistance on behalf of the LRF through the relevant procedures, with military assistance arriving in County Durham on Friday, 3rd of December. The Chief Fire Officer will provide some further context and information on the timing of this decision and our collective position as a local resilience forum. Although I do want to put on record that we were the first LRF in the North East to declare a major incident. Chairman, in closing, can I also thank all partners, including the military and indeed members of this council for their assistance during what has been an extremely challenging incident to manage. I will pass over to the Chief Fire Officer, who will provide an update in his role as Chair of the LRF for County Durham and Darlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Amanda John, members. I'll just outline the initial actions that the Local Resilience Forum, or LRF, took in relation to Storm Arwen and the timeline of events that led up to the calling of the major incident on the 1st of December. The LRF put in place a Tactical Coordinating Group, or TCG, at 11 o'clock on Saturday, the 27th of November, 2021, in line with the normal protocols we would put in place for a response to a significant incident in County Durham or in Darlington. The TCG was chaired by Durham Constabulary and had representatives from the following agencies: Durham County Council, the Civil Continuancies Unit, County Durham and Darlington Fine Rescue Service, North East Ambulance Service and Darlington Borough Council, as well as our Military Liaison Officer. Focus of the TCG initially was dealing with the immediate aftermaths of the storm, getting routes reopened, forming blockages from fallen trees or from the snow and ice that was affecting parts of County Durham and Darlington. There was concern over demand in the control rooms and contact centres and the power outages primarily in the west of County Durham. The general advice that we gave to the public from all the agencies at that time was to stay at home and only travel if it was absolutely essential. TCGs continued throughout Saturday and Sunday, with generally most agencies seeing a return to normal levels of activity. Power outages were still a concern, but the scale of the issue and the timelines for reconnection weren't clear at this stage. On Sunday night, a strategic call took place to refocus the TCG and specifically around power outages to understand what additional support might be required. The TCGs during Monday highlighted concern that the scale of the problem and the duration of the power outages warranted a strategic coordinating group to be established and this first met on Tuesday, the 30th of November. As LRF Chair, and with the information I have available to me at this time, I'm content that the LRF's multi-agency incident procedures were followed. Building on John's comments, not only will we be the first LRF in the North East to declare a major incident, we are actually the first LRF in the country to declare a major incident based on power outages. Going forward, the LRF will be carrying out a full debrief and identifying any lessons learned once we move out of the response phase. This is normal protocol for an emergency incident of this nature and there is tried and tested mechanisms in place to do this review. The LRF, however, is also keen to ensure our response to the storm is examined independently. We'll fully support whatever reviews are put in place and I've already spoken to Department of Leveling Up, Housing and Communities, Resilience Emergencies Division, who have oversight of LRFs at a government level to help facilitate an external review of our response. The time, however, to do that review is once we move out of the response phase. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, John, Stuart. I will now invite the leader to continue with the presentation of her report.
Thank you, John and Stuart. Last month saw the successful return of Lumiere to Durham with the festival's footprint extending far beyond the city. Six fabulous installations in locations, including Rebicassot, Finkle Pyry and the Passmore Pavilion at Peter League, meant even more people were able to experience the magic of this amazing event, which also places a national spotlight on our county, an undeniable boost to our bid to be named UK City of Culture 2025. As we've already heard, November also saw the council scoop the Children's Services Award at the Local Government Chronicle Awards. So I'd like to offer congratulations to all involved. And 12 parks across County Durham have been handed Green Flag awards, which recognise excellence and good practice in the management and development of parks and open spaces. The awards reflect the high standards of maintenance needed to keep the sites looking good and also the involvement of local communities. I'd like to offer congratulations to Paul Darby, who has been appointed to the role of Corporate Director of Resources on a permanent basis. Paul has been a real asset to the council since joining in 2009 and has done an exceptional job during the past year as interim Corporate Director of Resources, guiding the council's finances through what has been a busy and challenging period. He's already proven to be a valuable addition to the corporate management team. In other news, we have recently submitted proposals to the government to consider the reopening of Ferryhill Railway Station after the government allocated £500 million to restore railways and reconnect communities in 2020. A strategic outline business case is now with the Department for Transport, which will decide on the next steps. Working with the Auckland Project, we've also been successful in applying for the grant from the Department of Transport's Restoring Your Railway Fund to develop an early-stage proposal for plans to join the Bishop Auckland and Whigdale Railway Lines. A joint bid with Durham Constabulary and the Paysafecave for County Durham and Darlington to the Government Safety of Women and Night Fund has secured us more than £100,000 to ensure people in Durham city are as safe as they can be. The money will be used to offer training and education in how to be aware of vulnerability to develop night-time safety. The council has enshrined a number of organisations in the county to sign a new pledge and announce their commitment to work together to protect the environment. The County Durham Climate Change Agreement is a new initiative designed to create a strong and active partnership of organisations which will work together to make real environmental progress. Our local response to climate change was also the theme of the County Durham Partnership's first in-person meeting since October 2019. A wide range of partners, including the council, came together to discuss how we can strengthen county's response to climate change. And we also urged more people to consider becoming foster carers, with a launch of an appeal to recruit more carers for children with additional needs and disabilities. The council currently has over 250 families caring for children and young people, with care is able to continue supporting young people into adulthood, but we need more, particularly to support children who require additional support. And finally, as this is the last meeting of the year, may I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and hope that you'll all have time to rest, relax and spend time with your loved ones over the festive period.
Have any questions on the leader's report? Councillor Crute.
Thank you, Chair. At this stage, I don't have any particular questions for John Hewitt and Stuart about their response to the storm. But there are certainly many questions to be asked in the aftermath of the storm and especially about political leadership and response during and after the event. So with your indulgence, Chair, I'd like just a few moments to frame a couple of questions in context, given the seriousness of past events. And I assure you, I'll be as quick as I possibly can. As Deputy Leader of the Labour Group, I wrote to the Leader of the Council asking for an independent inquiry into the council's response to the storm. From the comments and the desperate pleas we have received from our communities and businesses over the past 10 days, we need to make sure that any inquiry includes the vices of those affected and also covers questions around the political response. Residents and businesses right across the county have many questions that need to be answered. So I would hope that the Leader of the Council will accede to all call for a fully independent inquiry. And we've got to ensure that any forthcoming inquiry isn't used simply to report and blame. That wouldn't benefit anybody. But we need to pinpoint precisely where and how things went wrong. And crucially, to ensure that lessons are learned from the mistakes made and that our residents are never again left in a position where they've had to endure many nights and days in darkness and freezing temperatures, many of them scared and alone. Now, I don't want to prejudge the outcome of any forthcoming independent inquiry. So at this stage, it's impossible to mitigate the impact of the storm and would you do the same things in the same way in the event of another similar incident? And does the Leader of the Council fit County Durham down? And finally, as I said earlier, I don't wish to preempt the outcome of any independent inquiry. I'll tell you now this morning that the Labour Group is putting the Leader of the Council... I'll tell you now this morning that the Labour Group is putting the Leader of the council and the Coalition Cabinet on notice pending the outcome of an independent inquiry into what happened after Storm Arwen two weeks ago. Thank you, Chair.
A lot of questions there, Counselor, a lot of questions. Leader?
Right, thanks, Rob, for the question. Without wanting to preempt the answer, I have already told you that I'm prepared to meet next week when councillor Marshall returns from his holiday with both you and him, and we'll look at what we are going to do with regards to an independent review. If you'd seen any of the coverage on TV, you'll have seen me say that that was going to happen. So when it comes to political leadership, I was there first and foremost, and if you don't either, so that will all come out within the review, so that this time tend to preempt anything.
Are the questions to nothing on the storm? Or is it on the storm?
Sorry, the question's not to the Chief Executive or Stuart. I'm sure policies and procedures were followed, but I'm talking about on a personal level whether the political leadership was on the same level, if that's okay. It's just a quick statement from a member who was representing people in Islington. The Leader said that she'd been out for ten days. I never saw her in Islington, I don't know.
It's not a statement that we wish. Well, the question to the Leader.
The question is, like our deputy Labour leaders just said, do we think we did enough? We've had people who were sitting next to a karate grass stove who were freezing cold, people in the pension, people with pensions, and this needs to be said, it needs to be said at this forum. We're talking about people, not just members on the presidency.
Please, please. The questions for the storm, I clearly said when John and Stuart finished that they would be answered outside of this meeting, not at the Leader, but for the Leader's questions and other things other than the storm. Okay, I see someone's hand up, is it because the item's not working? Is it working? No. You can't have. Point of clarification, okay. Microphone, please. Microphone. Can you put your hand up, please, stand up?
Thank you, Chair. It is a point of clarification for you as Chairman. Are you saying that we are not allowed to ask the Leader a question, which is part of her report? And that part of her report I'm referring to was the coalition's response to the storm.
From advice, it's a question that we have to, not a statement of things, what the Leader has said.
Chair, let me frame it a little differently then. From what you've just said, are you denying us the opportunity to ask a question of the Leader's report, which included the coalition's response to Storm Arwen?
Chair, if I perhaps insist in respect of the procedure rules, this is the Leader's report, and members are entitled to ask the Leader questions on the items in the report.
I agree.
The Leader and the Chair have already indicated that this isn't an item of debate. If you wish to ask councillor Hopgood a question in respect of the storm, you can do that, but it's not an opportunity to make statements. Councillor Crute has already asked a question in respect of the leadership, so any other questions need to be different to that one, rather than repeating the same question. But contributions from members, and we do have a number of members who speak on it, need to be limited to questions and not speeches.
That's fine, I'm very happy with that. Maybe I misunderstood the Chair when you tried to shout down my colleague, councillor Boys. Thank you.
Councillor Atkinson?
Yes, thanks, Chair. You'll be pleased to know it's not about the storm. The Leader mentioned Ferryhill, Ferryhill Station. Could the Leader give any indication of the timeline of the events that will happen around Ferryhill Station?
Right. Thanks, councillor Atkinson, for the question. No, at this moment, off the top of my head, I can't, but I'll make sure you get a written response.
Thank you. Councillor Miller?
Thanks, Chair. My question is about the storm. And given that there was no leadership in Ludworth, which is a village that I represent, there was no support whatsoever, would... Yes, a question, I'm getting to the question now. Would councillor Hopgood agree that her and her cabinet failed the people of Ludworth and the wider county, and what does she say to those people in my community that are asking for her to resign?
Leader?
Thank you for the question. Thanks for the question. No, I wouldn't say we failed it, no, I wouldn't say that I haven't heard of any calls to resign, but I'm sure you'll send them to me in due course. And what we will be doing, like I've said, is a full review, and what we won't be doing is following the plan that was in place that the Labour Party put in before this administration took over.
Okay. Councillor McKeown?
Thank you. I also want to build on what councillor Atkinson asked regarding Ferryhill Station. I think it's great that there's a plan to reopen it, but I was wondering when the council's going to hear about proposals to reopen the Leapside Line, which runs through my area, and also any plans for a line to concert, and how any reopening of Ferryhill Station would be impacted by the proposed reduction of services on the East Coast Main Line to Darlington and Durham train stations.
Leader?
Thanks, councillor, I'll make sure. Thanks, councillor, Adam.
As I'm sure you're aware, I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I will make sure you also get a full written response regarding the question that you've made.
Councillor Tensley?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question related specifically to a point in the statement that councillor Hopgood made there. She said that she was inviting councillor Crute to a meeting next week to discuss the, and we'll quote this, "A meeting to discuss what we are going to do about an independent review." Can councillor Hopgood please just give us a commitment that there will be an independent review, absolutely, one hundred percent, no options, no ifs, no buts, and it will involve all people from County Durham who have been affected by this terrible event, so they can implement this so we can all learn lessons in the future? I believe it's a yes or no answer. Thank you, Chair.
Leader?
I believe Stuart Eriksen gave you the answer that there would be an independent review. We will discuss this, as I've said last week, there will be a review, and I have given my commitment to members of the public who have been affected, that they will have the opportunity to have their say. And I did that live on national television, so it's there for everybody to see and to hold me to account for in the future.
Councillor Richardson? Councillor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've heard a lot of brickbats thrown about Storm Arwen, but I didn't say Amanda on the television, but travelling, I've heard her...
Counselor Snoss, statement, question, please.
I just want to wish, just want to say that the Leader and the Chair did really well.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you. Councillor Mulholland?
What lessons has the Leader of the council learned from the response to this politically, or as I think many of my residents would appreciate, the lack of political leadership on this? What lessons have been learned in the how she's been the council for an incident like this, to show real political leadership and give residents, particularly in my area, the confidence that they should have in the Leader of the council?
I can record this and put it on repeat if you want, but basically what I've said is that we will be discussing it, we will be learning, but I'm not going to preempt any inquiry.
Councillor Beatty?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Alison Beatty, Pelton Division, it's a question for the Leader, actually on Storm Arwen. I wasn't actually going to mention it, but I feel it's now necessary to, following the statement that she's just made about the previous leadership in the Labour Group. Does the Leader agree that benefits of having a regional civil contingency secretariat, which was once actually hosted in government office for the North East? It actually came about following the lessons learned from inquiries on the back of foot and mouth, fire strikes, flooding, and fuel strikes. I'm actually extremely curious to know now whether or not the leadership is actually looking to press central government as to why that was abolished in twenty eleven, and is the merit in having that local level of linkage between central and local government? Thank you.
Leader?
Oh, councillor Beatty, thanks for the question, but will certainly form part of the investigation that we move going forwards. Can I just remind everybody that we are still in the midst of a major incident? So we can discuss this until time runs out if you want this morning, but the reality is that we're still dealing with a major incident. We have committed that we'll look at this once that incident and everybody we know is safe and reconnected and we move on. I just think that we're going round in circles, but I'm happy to sit here and time out if that's what you want.
Can I bring Hillary in for one second?
Chair, we have three councillors registered to ask a question. The Leader has indicated that the time is quarter to eleven, you have two and a half hours for your meeting, and we're still on item four of the business. So you may wish to take a few of us to ask these three questions and then move on, but noting the questions and the answers that have already been given.
Councillor Fletcher?
Thank you. My question is regarding climate change. Thank you for mentioning, Amanda, about the County Durham Climate Change Agreement. However, we were all rather concerned when recently the City of Durham Parish Council withdrew the support for the Lib Dem City of Dur... Sorry, the Lib Dem City of Durham Parish Council withdrew all support for the COP26 event in the City of Durham, which a lot of people had put a lot of hard work into planning. This led to a lot of worry, stress, and pressure, where a limited company had to be formed in order to engage many residents in becoming more aware of climate change. Now parish councils and residence groups across the county are now looking at setting up their own action plans. Can we rely on support from the current administration for this work to go on, or may we worry about having the support withdrawn, leaving parish councils and residence groups adrift?
Okay. Leader?
Thanks, councillor Fletcher, for the question. I'm afraid I don't know the details about what you refer to, but I will look into it and come back to you. Thank you.
Councillor Sexton?
Good time, I'm going to withdraw my...
Okay. Councillor Surtis?
Thank you, Chair. My question is about the Leader's report in relation to Storm Arwen. I'm aware that I still have homes out in Islington, my ward, which was incredibly affected, as was the whole of East Durham. My question to the Leader today is, is what do you want to go and for me to tell my residents who still don't have electricity about how you've responded to Storm Arwen, and what do I say to this lady who's constantly texting me through this meeting, saying, "Can you help me get some electricity? I haven't had any for nine days now." So please, can you tell me, what do you want me to say to my residents and to all of the other residents as well that have suffered? Thank you.
To cross, then we'll make sure that someone contacts them. We rely on the information that we've got, and as I've said before, your phone review, and we'll come back to that, but I have dealt with people in the east as well as the rest of the county, and we will deal with every response that comes to us. And moving forward, as I've already committed, there will be a review.
Okay, members, we'll bring this to the end now, and I'm going to close this item. Can we ask the council to note the report? Can we move on to item five, which is questions from the public? There has been no questions received for today's meeting, so can we move to item six, petitions? There's been no petitions in today's meeting, so we will move to item number seven, the report of the Cabinet. Can I ask the Leader of the council? Can we move to item eight? Appointment of Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Can I ask for nominations to fill the vacancy for the Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee? Pross councillor Phil Heaviside, Chairman, thank you. Do we have a second there?
Chair, in seconding the nomination of councillor Phil Heaviside for the position of Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities, I'd like to place on record my appreciative work of the former Vice Chair, Brian Avery, and his unswerving support for the Chair, councillor Joyce Charlton. I'm sure that councillor Heaviside, who's been a member of the same committee, will develop a cohesive working relationship with the Chair and officers. Thank you.
Are there any further nominations, Counselor?
Chair, can I nominate councillor Jake Miller, please?
Can I have a second there for that, please?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to second councillor Jake Miller.
Thank you. I'll now pass it on to Helen, who will take through the procedure for the nominations.
Thank you, Chair. We will follow the same procedure that we did for appointments made at the annual council meeting back in May, so we have councillor Heaviside as one nomination and councillor Miller as the second nomination. We'll just wait for the moment for the vote to be loaded, and then if you're voting in favour of...
favour of councillor Heviside, click Select One. If you're voting in favour of councillor Miller, select Two. If you're abstaining, press Three. If you press the wrong button, if you're pressing the correct one, we'll correct your vote. If you just give us a moment to load the nominations and I'll confirm when voting's open. That's the vote open. So it's councillor Heviside, number one, councillor Miller, number two, three to abstain.
Members, councillor Heviside, 59, councillor Miller, 42. There was no abstentions. Can I ask the council to agree the appointment of councillor Heviside as the Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee? Thank you, members. Can we move on to item nine, Review of the Gambling Act 2005 Statement of Principles? Can I invite the Corporate Director of Neighbourhoods and Climate Change to present the report, please?
Free the Chair, good morning, everyone. This report puts forward for approval of council on the revised Statement of Principles in accordance with the Gambling Act 2005. This statement will cover 2022 to 2025. The Gambling Act gives the council discretion to manage local gambling provision through regulation and the setting of fees. It also gives recognition of gambling as a mainstream leisure activity. The County Council is required by the Act to publish a Statement of Principles, also known as the Gambling Policy, which sets out how we will carry out our work to determine licence applications for a variety of gaming and betting facilities. Should be noted that the remit of local authority control of the gambling does not extend to online gambling, national lottery or gambling advertising. The policy put forward clearly sets out the licensing authority's approach to regulation, having considered local circumstances. It ensures that gambling operators have sufficient awareness and understanding...